Good evening, everyone. Tonight is a work session of the Planning Board of South Kingstown. It is 7:00 PM. The date is Tuesday, April 12th. Our first agenda item is roll call. Susan Axelrod.
Here.
Joe Murphy.
Yeah.
Paul Jordan.
Yeah.
Peter DiStefano.
Yeah.
Rob Empathier.
Yeah.
And Maria Mack is here. Our first agenda item is the annual work program discussion on the prioritization of the Planning Board's annual work program. Jamie, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. As the members of the Planning Board will recall, last month, we worked on the work program spreadsheet and prioritization of those items that you had discussed prior over a couple of meetings. You have before you the results of your exercise number one and exercise two. And if you give me one moment, I'll bring them up on the screens. Just while I'm doing this, Madam Chair, with regards to the spreadsheet, again, the exercise one is where you were prioritizing them on a scale of one to 10, meaning number one being the most important to you, number 10 being the least important to you. The second exercise is you were prioritizing them one through 22 as if which item you would undertake first, second, third, fourth, fifth, sixth, and which one you would do last. With regards to the analysis, in the first one, there were some non-responses or NS or not sure's, and there were also some zeros. So when there was a NS or a zero, the totals were divided by the people or individuals who responded with a number. So if you put an NS, you weren't, you know, there were seven members, five responses. So if there were five responses, three were not sure, the total number was divided by three, not by five.
What does the B stand for?
The B was, there were a couple that were left blank.
Oh.
So the B represents the omission of a number or a not sure.
And with these averages at the end here, the low numbers are still the highest priority?
The low numbers on exercise one are the highest priority, yes.
Well, so they really keep well with each other.
I think it was an interesting exercise, specifically with exercise one. And I'll just go to the, where you saw the importance of items in large step. And some of the findings I found interesting, and we'll have a discussion just of exercise one and exercise two, and then kind of the comparison of those two exercises because the prioritizations align for the most part, but there's some slight variation. The other missing component from this discussion is if you had limited resources, what would you spend those on? And I think if there's some discussion tonight is perhaps taking these items and maybe doing the top 10 list and then financially constraining them. And we can do an exercise at your next work session and say, if you literally had $100, I gave you 20, 20, 10, 10, 5, 5, 5, 5, and made you put them in categories, how would you spend your limited resources? One member may put all $100 in a box. You may, you know, put 20, you may divvy it up. So usually when we do the exercise that I've been involved in, we don't give you, you know, five $20 bills. You have usually larger buckets and you're forced to make tougher decisions on where you would spend the most of your money. If you had, you know, if you have a $20 bill, you can't divide that by 20 and put a dollar in each box.
Why do you do it that way? Is that because some are more likely to get funding than others?
Again, it's the constraint. The department, as well as the town, is constrained by its financial ability or labor ability or a department of five. We have three planners and a JS coordinator and support staff. So without financial resources or labor resources, and there's only so much three professional planners can do with a particular workload, as well as process all of your permits.
So any project is equally as likely to receive funding?
Any project is equally likely to receive funding, but if you have, you know, we'll start the discussion, Robin is good leadway. Again, here are the results of exercise one, where you were asked to give each subject matter either a one, two, three, four, five, six, or 10, one being the highest ranking, 10 being the lowest ranking. Through this analysis, you ranked stormwater management regulations the highest priority. Again, some of that is controlled by DEM, some is controlled at the local level, so there's a balance there. Your second highest was the audio tech regarding the room that we're in and kind of the setting that we're in. This is one that was a high priority in this exercise, but not necessarily a high prioritization when you did the list one through 22. It dropped down. Number three, design guidelines and architectural standards are relatively high priority. They're number three here on your list. They're also a substantial priority on your prioritization one through 22. Coordination with the Board of Ed and demographic support was ranked high in exercise one, but it was ranked relatively low when you put them in a list of importance, one through 22, kind of from a workflow perspective in exercise two. Integrating information, again, received a high score. That was to explore the digital formatting and consistency of ease between regulatory documents, the interrelationship between subdivision and zoning regulations and our land use. Horsey Witten, again, was six on this list. It's number three, I believe, on the exercise two.
I mean, what about?
A little further down, sorry.
Four, right? Are we looking?
Yes, was four, sorry, four. So again, those were relatively aligned. Cluster conservation, flexible design subdivisions was number seven in your prioritization here. Public engagement outreach was eight. Build-out analysis was nine. Complete streets, 10. Main Street and the American Rescue Program was 11. Grow Smart, 12, which you could consider being in alignment with 11 in spending the American Rescue monies. Climate change and heat islands, 13. Greenway master plan, 14. Route 108 and the special management district, again, regulatory review, design guidelines, that was 15. But again, you had design standards and architectural standards rated at three. 15 and three are somewhat interchangeable because you develop design guidelines and regulatory guidelines, those will affect Route 108 and the special management district. 16, no one seemed to have the stamina to tackle affordable housing at the state legislature level versus attempting to address it at the local level. Again, that's a big picture and hot topic item now. Scenic roadway plan, that was your lowest priority. And it also is fairly well-aligned when you prioritize them one through 22. And again, sorry, farm events aligned with climate change. So the exercise two, the intent there was to kind of constrain the exercise to say, you know, if you had the top 10 priorities, how would you tackle them? What would you do first? Item number one was design guidelines and architectural standards, which again aligns fairly well with exercise one. Where that was ranked, three. Old Tower Hill, again, that's a regulatory and design guideline review. That was your number two. Stormwater management regulations is number three in the prioritization list, one through 22. It was number one in your one through 10 rating. Horsey Witten, oh, Horsey Witten, sorry, the missing middle, which is an ongoing study, was similar rating in your discussion of one through 10. The subdivision zoning regulations and integration is number five. Complete streets, number six. Route 108, special management district was seven. And I think, to me, what you're starting to see here is these are regulatory things and improvements you can make to your regulations that result in better development in the community. Design guidelines, development guidelines, regulatory changes for Tower Hill, stormwater management regulations, missing middle, subdivision zoning regulations, complete streets, 108. Coupled with that is a build-out analysis to be potentially undertaken and updated. Climate change, heat islands, conservation subdivision, landscape regulations, and I'm not sure everybody, you know, what the response and what your thinking was when you rated this one, but it's down a little bit from your design guideline discussion items, but I think it's integral to that discussion. Grow Smart at 12. Farm events at 13. American Rescue at 14. And again, some of the board members may have felt that American Rescue is occurring, happening, and is going to result in some improvements in town. Affordable housing, that was in relatively alignment with your one through 10 categorization. Integrating information, public engagement, outreach, TRC audio/video, tree program, and scenic roadway plan. So again, scenic roadway plan, and maybe to Robin's point, there's not a clear understanding of that, the role of the scenic roadway plan. But again, that scenic roadway plan, to me, is also part of those kind of one through six, one through seven, where you prioritize regulatory changes as it relates to design standards.
Jamie, a couple of thoughts. I sort of separated the scenic roadway from everything else because with the understanding that this is already something that the council has created a committee to develop standards. I don't see that as being a big part of our work plan, per se.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and again, we always come up with these, what we think are brilliant annual plans, but then often what happens is something important comes up and suddenly we have to, you know, deal with building height or something else that the council sends to us that, you know, is urgent in, you know, in and of itself. And I appreciate that you made separate specific categories, but I have to say that where you put climate change and heat islands, to me, design, creative design and creative zoning relative to climate change encompasses a lot of these things. It encompasses stormwater, street and pedestrian design, design standards, landscaping, tree program. Those are all part of sort of that connected issue. So it's hard for me to look at these things and put them separately.
Maria, to your point and comments, the exercise was developed to engage that type of conversation and slightly broken apart to bring you back to center. So to your point, absolutely, some of the items I pulled apart, and you've recognized, although they were apart and in different categories, they're interrelated. And I think that showed when you started to prioritize the one through 22, because your top 10 are primarily design and regulatory related that impacts the quality of development that you're seeing before you as a regulatory board. So to your point, you know, and that's why I was surprised with the landscaping, that the, and again, you have limited choices and you can't give everything a one and you can't make everything the top priority, although a few people tried. There were a few 1111s on the second exercise, but, you know, looking at the top 10 list, and I'll just go through, you know, we have design guidelines, architectural standards, old tower hill, stormwater management, subdivision zoning regulations, complete streets, special management district, build-out analysis, climate heat islands, cluster flexible design, landscape regs, grow smart. Those are the top 12. As a planner, I think there's a theme there or a central identity to those, and those are all steered towards regulatory updates that can affect the type of developments and the standards of developments that you've been seeing and trying to handle, which leads to our second item tonight that, you know, is on your agenda. Again, seeing the list, I'd appreciate feedback and comments. I think, looking at the one through 22, it aligns with our work program and where we're seeking funding, both from outside state agencies as well as our capital improvement program, and also money we have set aside for consultants.
Questions, comments? I was thinking along the same lines as Maria with the complete streets and greenways, sort of thinking about all, thinking about all those things together rather than separate. And I realize they're not the highest priority. One question I had about the stormwater regs was maybe if our legal counsel, if we decide we want to pursue something, you can look at what we can do versus what, I know, you know, with wetland regs, there are some things we can't do now versus what the state will do. I'm not sure how that works with the stormwater regs. And I'm just curious if we, if we wanted to go further. If we wanted to think about stormwater retrofits without, I think right now the rule is if you're doing a new development, if we tore Wakefield Mall down to put something new in, they'd have to do stormwater work, but I'm wondering if there's opportunity to require stormwater retrofits just because of the impact that that area has.
Potentially, Paul, if I can, I'll frame the question so Amy can perhaps try and give us a concise answer, although there probably isn't one. A lot of the stormwater management that you see in your application gets reviewed by DEM in some instances before we even see final plans or other plans. So I'm not sure how far the municipality can go on the designs, design side, ah, design side, to potentially influence that design. But from my perspective, you may not be able to have a hard regulation that requires them to do something, but I think from the design side, you can perhaps give them some guidance so that when they're in South Kingstown, this is what the planning board's looking for versus if they're in North Kingstown, there is no guidance, so they just do it with a review by the state without any guidelines.
Yeah, I'm just curious what more?
If Amy could weigh in on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, and we know that, for example, the town of Warren is way ahead of everyone in terms of a lot of stormwater issues, and I believe I have heard about retrofit, and it might be worth looking to see what they have done in terms of updating their regulations.
I think Wakefield Mall could do nothing except continue to exist as Wakefield Mall, and we would require that they do something about the stormwater rather than waiting for them to propose some redevelopment that would trigger a requirement.
I will need to do some research on the extent of DEM's authority and what will it need for municipal, um, design guidelines, like, to address that.
And in terms of reviewing existing sites?
The other thing I wanted to ask about, just in terms of the greenways, complete streets, I've noticed, I do a lot of bike riding, and I notice there are lots of places where you get into a subdivision, you can't drive to the next subdivision over, but there's almost always a little path where two cul-de-sacs come together and everybody cuts through. They become great places to ride your bike through. And I've heard rumor of a way to get to the bike path from Biscuit City Road and then sort of through a path and then into Blueberry Hill, sort of cutting through these little paths. And I think those are great opportunities to, you know, I'm not saying we need to pave them, but just to promote them, put up signage maybe to sort of encourage that kind of connectivity. You don't drive through, but you can get through.
So are they, they're not on right of place?
Some of them are, yeah.
Yeah, so we could establish them.
I think, to Paul's point, there's a number of instances in the community where you have traditional grid patterns, and the through street was never developed. It ended up becoming a hammerhead on one side and potentially in a modern development, a cul-de-sac on the other. But there is still potentially in some of those developments, a town right away between the two. So my note was, you know, do we have the ability to map and/or evaluate connectivity between potential dead-end streets and complementary developments?
It's like the modern version of what used to be called a cart path. You can see on maps.
It just seems like sort of low-hanging fruit in terms of greenway development and the idea of complete streets, that you could identify these places, that people can walk, because sometimes it's not obvious, you know, that it is a paper street or that it's owned by the town, and people may be reluctant to ride their bike through even though they're seeing lots of other people doing it.
You're not sure you can go there?
Right, right.
Clearly, you have been at the forefront.
I don't ask, I just go.
Maria, I just want to take a moment to look at, you know, 1918, 17, 16, 15, and kind of working backwards. To Maria's point, the scenic roadway plan, that's underway. Initially, I had requested some additional funds to bring a consultant onboard. Those were potentially cut and then potentially put back by the town council, so we may still have the ability, we'll know in approximately two weeks, whether that, those funds move forward. With regards to the tree program, I think this is something that was interesting when I came here, that there were some discussions about the town having a small nursery, buying small tree stock, you know, five-gallon material, planting it in the ground. But again, I don't know if the town's ever done a cost-benefit analysis of, you know, getting that small even root stock, planting it, caring for it for 10 or 15 years before it can be transplanted within the public realm. You know, that's something we'll probably continue to discuss and look at. With regards to TRC and audio tech and public outreach and integrating information, all those, those didn't come up as the highest priority. They're not dropping off of the department's list. Those are things we try and do almost on a daily basis, given the resources we have. Again, affordable housing, state legislature under 15. We continue, as a department, to track that. I know Maria has an involvement, state planning. So again, that'll be something that, although it's not in the top 10 on your list, it's not something that we don't do. Now, I just wrote a three-page letter to the state regarding proposed legislation. I want to thank Brian Wagner, who assisted in that compilation and review of the legislation. Again, we will continue, as a department, with the Planning Board's support. Excuse me, Maria? Single, yeah, basically trying to say that single family in certain areas of town cannot just be single family, that it has to be multifamily. Again, American Rescue, $9 million program. We just had a kickoff meeting with Weston and Sampson, so that project will be moving forward. We anticipate in June to have the consultants onsite for four days of boots-on-the-ground design work. And we'll keep you up to date on that. Farm events, I want to say that's kind of on the sidelines for the moment. We had a couple of landowners who were very interested in that, but they haven't moved forward with any proposed revisions to our regulations. So if I had a stack of paper and there are higher priorities, that is not at the top of the pile right now. And again, 12, 11, 10, 9, to me, those are all interrelated in the discussion.
Can you go back to farmer events for a minute? I see that it's pretty low on the list, but I worry that there will be another application that'll be potentially unpalatable and will have no power to limit farm, whatever definition of farm you use, events in the backyard of a quiet neighborhood. And so would it not be pretty quick work to just add a little bit, something to our regulations to call it a special use permit, where we have some discretion to not just, it's not allowed by right, which I think the regulations right now say it is? You call yourself a farm, you can have weddings in the backyard with amplified music, and we have no power to control that or there's no discretion, where we can do a special use permit where it's appropriate to have those events?
How will that counsel respond to that?
I'm not so sure it would be quick because the ordinance already has an existing definition for a farm, and I think you have to come up with a legitimate definition of what kinds of property would qualify for farm events. I don't think you could, you could just turn away from the existing definition and leave it up to the court to decide based by whose basis it was a built on and what's not.
I wouldn't call that quick work.
I agree that it is pretty urgent.
I think it's more urgent than we all do, just because we've seen a project come before us, which had, seemed, I felt powerless to limit what that homeowner wanted to do with his backyard in that area. I think if this, you know, we've become such a tourist destination, our land is worth a gazillion dollars, this starts happening, and it's not isolated properties like Shepherd's Run, have at it, you don't have any neighbors. But for other neighborhoods, it might be less appropriate, and I don't know if we have any power to stop it if people come to us to have those things.
Well, it did stop, right, after the application that revoked all the available places before the board, and then it didn't go forward, right? So I wouldn't call the planning board to process it unless, because, one, as developed in the framework needed, it's going to be a part. Two, I think there's a lot of, like, the existing ordinance. I agree that it needs some changes, but I don't think someone submitted an application
some changes, but I don't think, if someone submits an application tomorrow, who's going to review it under the existing law, the ordinance, I think the planning board has a great deal of authority to handle, um, to take this on a farm, whether or not amplified music is allowed, um, and really, when a man is full of farms and, um, if the board has broken down the last five or four years, I think the board has exercised this, um, authority, and I think you're right that there are a lot of potential farms that could apply these, but I don't think it's something that necessarily rises to, I mean, you should ask the council, you know, if it's actually more important than one.
You know, Susan mentioning this, this particular item, and the whole special-use permit, reminded me about something that is not on this list, but that we were discussing, and it was just before COVID, and it had to do with student rentals and special-use permits, and having some means by which there was a yearly registration so that neighbors would have, if there was an issue, some kind of means by which they could plan things, so if you had somebody that's a bad neighbor, you know, you had a means to, and they had this renewal, speak to that, and then, I don't know, it just disappeared in the.
Is that just?
Yeah, it wasn't.
If we do it for one, we should do it for all.
Yeah, yeah, I, it's, so the students.
I think, I thought we did get some, well.
Right, the, right, but then we were talking about the special-use permits, the ones with the land, and that there's no way to, you know, other than making a phone call every time there's a loud party that's up to 2:00 A.M., we talked about having some additional type of annual registration.
I think we, we modified some kind of a renewal period, um, I'll have to look up.
Yeah, can you check on that? Because I, you made, you reminded me.
It's like a two-year renewal period, let me, let me, um, I'll, I'll put my finger on that.
And then there was something that you, you know, noticed, so that.
Then I guess I'll follow that by saying, has anybody actually registered in town for more than three hundred people? Because, so I have a student at U R I, and I'm shopping for housing next year, there are so many four- and five-bedroom houses for rent in South Kings Town, it's shocking compared to how many I think it might have registered to be legitimate three and four, four, five-bedroom houses. There's a lot of them in town, so I don't know if there, how many of them are actually registering, but, yeah, like, there's a lot of them, and there seems to be no enforcement, or even, I've even heard, if I wasn't here, I wouldn't even know this was a law, like, it's not, we're not advertising it to, I don't know.
Right, when the council enacted this zoning ordinance amendment, there was no advertising, um, public notice, and, and we, this is a text amendment, it didn't get promoted, or say. It's section 504.14 of the zoning ordinance, and we did provide that special-use permits granted under this section shall be valid, shall expire after a period, so it's not an annual renewal, but it's a three-year period, um, and the property owner, the property applies, so it's a special-use permit every three years. So it's not annual, but there is a notice requirement, and with regard to enforcement, the, it's kind of the same story with every topic, the zoning, which I'm right, Jamie Gorman, who's been on the, on the, to do that research, but any complaints that are submitted, who actually, um, he's sent out numerous letters, um, on the list section, and the zoning board has granted its update, and it looks special-use permits, and we, um, the zoning board has approved renewal statutes, so I think we were, in, in the way that it was intended to, that they were to modify, um, new applications, renewal applications, um, and I can only assume that, um, you know, more complaints were coming to light as things started, I guess they're back on campus now, but I'm sure there was probably a, um, already activity in 2020, 2021, 2022.
I didn't mean to get too off-track, but it's something I've been thinking about for a while.
Perhaps that could be coordinated with U R I, don't they run some type of electronic billboard where rentals are shown to be available to students? Like, where does your student go to get that listed?
I don't know, I, I found a website, to U R I, where landlords can list their houses for rent.
So maybe we could get U R I to enforce the registration process.
Those were landlords submitting.
Just smiling.
They don't even talk to us, why would they help us?
Well, you have to ask for us.
Okay, so again, those are, were the results of exercise one and two. I don't know if, given the discussion and looking at the prioritization of kind of those one through 12 in some of the discussions tonight, whether you would feel you'd like to look at the fiscally constrained model, and we could do that at your next work session, and they put just a slightly more realistic spin on if you had these 10 priorities, how you, how you would spend resources. I may reconfigure the 12 to be more organized with regards to the discussion and the line of questioning tonight.
Before you come back with that, I guess my question would be, if you could put a number on these in terms of how much work, you know, they're probably not all equal in terms of the amount of time or effort or money that's required, and so for me to say, all right, I'm going to start dropping money on them, not knowing.
Well, yeah, and exactly, like, staff capacity, what needs funding for consultant services, whether it would come out of budget, or whether it's something that would be a grant security, or we'll go both, you know, and if we have something that's our number-one issue, then at some point, we need to figure out how to start working toward it.
Right.
Something like that.
I'm sure you guys talked.
Yes, so in our capital improvement plan for the department, I want to say our five-year plan, our ask is just under $300,000 for design and regulatory review and updates. Within that, we have prioritization of what we do in the first two years, what we do in year three and four, and what we follow up in year five. The difficulty is giving the fiscally constrained nature of the community and the state and the country, it's a trickle-down effect, and there's always a tendency that those types of projects get pushed off in the capital plan. It happened to us this year, where there was, I think, initially $125,000 earmarked for this year's capital plan, and that was reduced to 50. So that just means the workload gets pushed a little bit further out. So again, the more we can try and refine that work program and that prioritization, the more broader discussion we can have with the administration, being in the town manager's office, and then with council on financial needs to accomplish your goals and objectives contained in your work program.
You mentioned a cost-benefit analysis, who is doing that? Are they, you know, there are a lot of things to take into consideration, among those being also the cost of inaction, particularly when we're talking about better managing the stormwater, and whether it's retrofits or.
The, Maria, the only thing I mentioned on course, benefit analysis, was on the tree program, and again, I, yeah, it's a very interesting initiative, some larger communities, mostly urban communities in big metro areas, there are some communities in Boston who have their own nurseries, it's typically run out of parks and recreation, but again, it's, you know, they fund it annually as a staff and line item improvement, but every year, they don't have a budget for going to buy trees, they pull from their own nursery stock, but there's a cost to that, because you have staff, that staff requires trucks and equipment, fertilizer, pesticides, and, you know, but again, once it's established, what value does it bring to the community?
Yeah, and going beyond your idea of a tree farm, in terms of just capacity analysis and all of these other things, in looking at it, or when you come back to us with, you know, staff hours, as well as cost and all of that, how can record dollars be factored into this and the potential need for a grant writer or coordinator? I know that's something, that there are a lot of grants out there right now, other communities have realized the necessity of having somebody doing this kind of work, because everyone else is already set in, and they always pay for themselves and more.
Absolutely, initially, when the planning department submitted their budget to the town manager, there was additional $70,000 ask for that position, which would potentially would have come on as a consultant for the first year, and then potentially as a full-time staff member as time moves on. I think there's, I want to call it a need, but an opportunity for a position that could be partially economic development and also grant, you could potentially fund that position if they were successful on their grants. Typically, grants allow you to take 10% administrative, so if you can bring in a million dollars, or average over time, a million dollars a year, that's $100,000 that you recapture for that individual. And it's, it takes a special person, a special act, they're few and far between, as well as someone who can handle the economic development side. But again, you know, whether it's the function of a Main Street coordinator-type individual who also takes the role of grant writer, or an economic development person, those are discussions I've had with Terry Murphy, and I'm sure they will be continued with Mr. Manny as time moves on, when he comes onboard in May.
So in addition, looking at numbers, I think, just, you know, to come back and say, these are the things, the planning staff thinks we could actually knock off the list in the next year or two, given financial realities and standard time, these are things that are doable, you know, not, we could make some progress on, but these are things we could say, there, we've knocked it off until it comes up the next time.
Again, with the, you know, things like design guidelines and architectural standards, with a consultant onboard, you're probably looking at 12 to 18 months, and again, as long as we're not fiscally constrained, we can have a start and a finish to that, that's the nice thing about bringing consultants on, they're not staff members, they don't get sidetracked based on permitting load or other priorities that come up, I, you know, the planning board's well aware of that, as well as town council, that we occasionally get diverted. I know I do, not necessarily on a daily basis, but multiple times a week, and I think, I may be playing a larger role in the American Rescue Plan from a department standpoint.
Can I ask a couple of questions? On the, on the ranking, one of the things that scored pretty high was your one about Department of Education and reuse of school buildings, but I didn't see it make page two, and I wondered, do we have any say in that? Like, whatever they were planning for Curtis Corner seemed to happen completely around us, you know, we did, we never had any input into redeveloping that building, which will now apparently become vacant. Do we get to involve ourselves in how that land will be reused? How does that work? I think we were, the whole referendum thing, we were completely excluded.
I think, again, that there's a lot of value in that exercise, and Susan, you make a good point, if you feel as a planning board that that is important to you, you could, as a board, ask to be actively involved in the disposition of school property as it relates to planning and consistency with your comprehensive community plan, that could go to the town manager and council. The difficulty is, is under the G I zone, and the way that the town permits their own facilities. Some could argue there is a role for the planning board, and others would argue there isn't, that that's a decision of others.
Like, for example, when they talked about moving the high school to Curtis Corner, nobody had even done a traffic study, which, to me, sounds like the first thing you do when you talk about locating a large school in your town, and is that not part of our role? I know U R I right now is planning to build a museum on Ministerial Road, do we get to have any say in that, or does that just happen because it's U R I land, and you don't get to talk about that either?
That is state property exempt from local zoning.
Or traffic studies, or?
That is state property exempt from local zoning.
Well, even, so scenic highway.
They're doing it on state property.
Although there is a role, albeit a minor role, for the representative from the town sits on the U R I.
Capital Improvement Committee, yeah. They have met.
The input, however minor that might be.
I want to say they've met twice in 18 months.
Question about state property exempt from local zoning, only because we had an experience at D E M with putting a new building in Arcadia, where Exeter and Richmond both challenged it based on local zoning, and said, this is zoned open space, you can't put an office building here. Eventually, D E M backed away, I don't know if it ever made it out of court or not, but.
In, you know, in my 32 years of being a planner, I had been involved in both state and federal projects. Whether or not you have a true regulatory role, you can always ask and attempt to have a seat at the table, in a manner to represent your community and maybe affect something that can make a project better for you as residents and the residents around you. So again, if you don't have a regulatory role, it doesn't mean you can't ask to be involved in the project. You know, we've done that with, with, the town has been relatively successful on some state ride-op projects, of asking for a seat at the table and getting some designs modified. When improvements were done to Tower Hill Road, South Kings Town representatives were involved in that project, even though it was a state project, it's still, there's still projects within your community, I think, asking the new president of U R I, or the council asking that, you know, designs be shared and input, an avenue for input be allowed, they don't have to listen, but just having the opportunity, there's value in that.
I agree with that, and I smiled when Jamie said we don't have any authority, because we may have some role to play, but it's complicated, and I'll give you the short version in response to the question of what happened to the Ford case. In 2020, the Rhode Island Supreme Court ruled in this case, town of Exeter versus state of Rhode Island, and the state in that case argued that because neither Richmond nor Exeter had a comprehensive plan, that the state didn't have to apply by the comp plan or the zoning ordinance, the Supreme Court disagreed. The Supreme Court said, where there is a conflict between local regulations and proposed development on state land or by the state, this agency needs to bring that project to state planning. But again, that only applies when, um, if the local ordinance or comp plan says that the state wants to do it. The first step is determining whether or not there's actually a conflict. If the state planning council approves the project, then the state would need to apply whatever legal require, but ultimately, if it's important, the court will employ a balancing of the test that most likely will come out with the state. So if not, the answer is a complicated kind of case by procedure. So if not, the answer is a complicated kind of case by nature. And I don't know enough about the state or project at this point to kind of give a definitive answer. So the answer is maybe the town has something to say about it, but what I think Jamie said of informal authority telling the word message to the town or the state to work.
Always good to help those towns down there.
So Jamie, can I ask about another thing? Something else which was important to me that didn't make the list was protecting some historic villages like Main Street with demolition delay or some design guidelines for designating some spaces, not necessarily like the historic district in Kingston, but some way to protect, say, that stretch from the Larchwood Inn up to like, I don't know, Purple Cow and just making that a separate space that has a little bit of overlay to protect some of the historic nature of our town. Is that something that we take on as a project or is this just my own?
And Amy can correct me. A demolition delay, I believe in Rhode Island would be ordinance and controlled by council.
A demolition by neglect ordinance?
No, a delay. So if someone proposed to do, to demo a building, that there was a 30-day delay in ordinance that required them to put the town on notice. There was intent to demolish and there was in essence a 30-day stay or a time period.
Or, or some kind of enhanced authority for historic buildings that they have to demonstrate that they've considered alternatives? Yeah, that's something that council could adopt.
Yeah, I think we had talked about maybe asking the Historic District Commission to put together some language for us. They would do research for us. And they were interested also in pursuing protecting some specific neighborhoods in town or maybe some historic buildings that have been identified.
Brian is our staff member to the Historic District Commission, so he can potentially weigh in if they've discussed that.
Yeah, Brian Whitehead. The Historic District Commission has actually been discussing this topic with and on. We've started to sort of sketch out a rough outline of what they think that demolition delay might be like in town. And the concept is currently something like demolition application comes in, passed by the Historic District Commission for evaluation as to whether or not the structure has historic significance. If they make that binding, then their delay will be imposed on the demolition. But all it really is, is a delay to see if the property owner can find somebody prior to the end of buying, observing the property, see if the community wants to take some sort of action to purchase the property. In the end, if the, if the property owner waits out the delay, it's still ultimately their property, you know, protected in some way, shape or form as it might be in the Historic District, the demolition would be. So that's the concept that's being discussed.
So that's just for demolition, not necessarily for dramatic cosmetic changes to buildings along on our, you know, in certain neighborhoods or historic buildings.
Are you getting more into creating a regulated Historic District? Like, I guess there are regulations setting changes to the historic structure.
I think if I bought, say, the Bell Block and decided to tear it down and build some, you know, thing that looks like the Fine Arts Building up at URI, right now, there'd be nothing to prevent that from happening. That would be detrimental to the town and I think it's going to bite us if we don't remember the Larchwood and prevent that from happening again.
Then what you're talking about is creating another local Historic District aesthetic review or, or, or look like.
There's nothing in between. It either has to be a historic overlay where every shingle is micromanaged or it's a, no regulation.
Well, it, it, no, I mean, the, the amount of regulation applied to the district would be, would be that district because you don't necessarily have the same set of regulations that apply a colonial-era residential district to a more modern, although still quite old, commercial district in Wakefield. Set up another systemic standard and guideline.
Yeah, and I think we've heard that from people. Love to be there. Also wondering, has the HBC talked at all about the fact that the governor has put in a certain amount of money, quite a lot into the historic state tax credit program? And there's a bill right now in the General Assembly that would extend that program the longer duration of time. That's a really strong incentive to apply or own historic building.
We have certainly talked about how to get words and letter things like tax credits that are going to help support people who are inclined to protect the historic nature of the building. Have not discussed that specifically. Mention it, I would talk to the chair about it.
I think in any discussion on, on Main Street, whether it be Wakefield or Peaceville, you have an eclectic mix of architecture. There are some newer renovations that have even added to the eclectic mix of styles in downtown. So again, part of the design guideline initiative would be to develop something that allows a developer or the redevelopment of property that works within that eclectic mix. You do not have one particular style on Main Street. There is, you know, from brick to clapboard to shingle to vinyl sided. You know, some of that architecture was peeled off over the years. You have a building that was just retrofitted that has aluminum or stainless steel kind of vertical barn board, as well as EPIS work where they scored block and then painted the building with blue trim. But that's part of the eclectic mix of downtown. If you had a design guideline, you have to be careful how it's written so that it may negate that mix that makes Main Street, Main Street. But there are also some iconic buildings that if they were lost to an event, you would probably like them to be replicated in some way, shape or form and not just become a modern block, you know, building. Again, that's, that's part of what we want to do as a board, that I'm hearing from you, that you want to do as you move forward. With that, Maria, would you like to move to your second agenda item? So, Madam Chair, with regards to the discussion on the multi-household land development regulations, I'm just going to switch screens here. I'm going to pull up a quick slide. I will not tell you where this is. It is somewhere in town. It has been photoshopped, but it's, I think it's a good background aerial photo of somewhere in town showing a traditional block with two potential vacant parcels. It could be R10, it could be R20. Okay. But I think this, this is, to me, the start of the discussion. Your current regulations, Amy appreciates the flexibility. It could be a comp permit too, because then zoning doesn't necessarily matter. Your current land development regs as it relates to multi-household development requires that that development occur a hundred feet of this block because you have a very traditional development pattern. And I'm just going to, if you just bear with me, I'm going to go back to this. Sorry. Try and get it to a better level. Sorry. A very traditional development pattern. And if I just snap a couple lines here. You know, there's your front yard setback. Sorry. Oh, Phil. Another big red line.
The other question is that in the lower left-hand side of the corner, there's a large parking lot. Transition zone between.
That part, that parcel's an outlier. It's an outlier in the, in the block. So again, to Maria's point, you, you have potentially in the lower left-hand corner, very observant of a parking parcel that had this traditional development pattern. Those houses were removed. And you have a standard new building, which would, just out of the photograph in the lower left, that meets a traditional setback with the parking in front of it. So the difficulty we have is if I take this traditional block that's right here and I move it. Sorry. And I move it to where you would have it continue along this block. And if you look at where the frontage is for these homes, that's what the front yard is. But if you did a multifamily household development on here, the first unit, if you look where I'm hovering the mouse, that's where the first unit could be located. You can get a waiver under your regulations. You know, a lot of your, as we work with and look at the new styles of development that are coming in, you're looking at the infill development, you're looking at multi-households. And I think the way the multi-household regulation was written, it wasn't necessarily written for infill. It was written for new construction and it was written for large apartment complexes. And you're not seeing larger apartment complexes. You're seeing single family. You're seeing duplexes and you're seeing, potentially you'll see a triplex or four-row townhouse. That's not necessarily set up to fit within your existing regulations. Because it pushes that development in.
Particularly the older parts of town, High Street, I think none of it could be built today. And High Street's interesting because it's got such a mix of multifamily, single family, some commercial. But a lot of it's right up on the sidewalk. And it isn't necessarily a bad thing. And you, and I have looked at it and wondered how much of this could actually, could you build today? With those kinds of rules and things.
What was the?
Unfortunately, none of your planning staff were available when that was originally written. So again, a lot of times you write a regulation for a specific intended use. And when that regulation was contemplated, you may have been contemplating larger apartment complexes. You know, if in the middle of this lot, someone wanted to build a, you know, 100 and, I think traditionally, if someone said, I want to build an apartment complex there, the planning board would probably say, well, I don't want to see it from the street. So how do you do that? You require it to be 100 feet from the street and then you landscape the heck out of that 100 foot. But you're not, what we're not seeing in the R10 or 20 or 30, where these types of projects may be contemplated, large blocks of land that would allow that type of development. What we're seeing is these smaller outliers where you really want to match the traditional grid pattern and honor that and then potentially fill in behind it. You know, so if you just bear with me one sec, I can do. You know, th- this is just clipping one of those houses and, you know, if you were doing multifamily and you started to put these in a row. You know, without doing a subdivision, if these were duplexes, they would be considered a multifamily household development project. But you couldn't do that because those would, without, unless a waiver was granted, would both need to be back here.
But if those were duplexes, wouldn't they be twice as big as those buildings you're showing us?
No, not necessarily.
They could be, because that's what you've seen.
They could be.
Just glue them together and call it a duplex.
But this house on Lot 33 is approximately 3,000 square feet. It's 70 by 40. That could be a duplex.
What if each of those duplexes was 7,000 square feet? So I guess can we have some sort of, do we have any sort of regulation about how much of that lot I can cover with parking lots and buildings? And maybe that's a more sensible way to do it because if I can, if I throw one affordable in there so I can get rid of the setbacks in the zoning, I could potentially pave that entire lot with rooftops and parking lots, which would not fit that neighborhood at all, regardless of the setback.
And I think what's difficult is having that conversation. And I think what I'm trying to do with this is, you know, we, we have some funds available in our department that I actually have to use, I've been told, by July 1. So part of the Horsley-Witten study was some resources we have here. I would like to have Union Studios start to lay out some of those items as it relates to infilling some of these potentials, to answer your question, Susan. We have building coverage regulations. We do not have lot coverage regulations. There is no other standard other than building coverage. There is not a maximum pervious surface coverage on any property within the town.
Those little buildings you're moving around, I could fit eight on that property and put parking lot all over the rest of the property. And we would have to say yes to that if one of those units was affordable. If, if that entire lot was covered in those houses with parking lots.
So typically, if you just bear with me, what you would potentially see is, you know, someone's going to try and figure out how to do, I'm just. Right, that.
Also, just to, to what Susan's saying, I mean, I'm not quite sure how big these are, but I'm looking at the one on the left and thinking, you know, Cottage Court or something. And again, I don't know if it's big enough. But I think about the lot of the street that used to be, was it Houston Brothers or something, a little restaurant that's been torn down? And if you didn't have 100-foot setbacks on that corner, you could squeeze a lot of neat little houses under that lot and I think it would work. I have no idea what's.
But again, what a developer is going to try to do, and again, you're, you're working on potential regulations to encourage this type of infill. And how do you do it in an acceptable manner? How do you minimize infrastructure? You know, but you may have a developer who, who, who comes in and tries to. Well, with the, what I'm, what I'm trying to do on the discussion here, and again, setbacks and everything, is potentially you could have someone who looks to bring a road in.
Would you have a lot more living space around each of those houses? That's not overseeing. lately. Like, each of those houses has their own private space, and we might see a duplex or two coming in front of us that have no private space, which means that they've built up every, every dry inch of the property's been built on. 10% open space is a pretty crummy little number. You've got houses piled on top of each other, but we are not downtown city here.
Right, but what we've been saying, that's what I said earlier, is just keep those lots, a hundred and half, all you see is the house and nothing else.
But, you know, just simply kind of photoshopping that, that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 units on a parcel that replicates somewhat of the footprints that surround the neighborhood. Some of the things Brian, Jay and I have talked about is, to Susan's point, and the conversations that you've had as board members, that there's kind of two types of development, that this development would be developed as a condo project, the space outside of the footprint, maybe beyond the 10-foot realm, would be held in an HOA. But is there a role for better defining that open space? And potentially breaking the open space into two categories? There's an open space that primarily usually is the buffer around the property or that setback that they can't build in anyhow. But maybe this is a second classification called passive or active recreation within the open space, and there's a minimum square footage that's required per unit, and that an area can't be less than, you know, 30 by 60, or 1,800 square feet, in a 30 by 60 space, that's about half this room times this length, you could throw a baseball, throw a frisbee, kick a soccer ball, throw a football, that there'd be some functional aspect to that space, not just a developer saying, "Hey, it's open space." But isn't that your detention basin? Well, under our definition, your detention basin can be within the open space. So I, you know, the discussion that you've had, and the reason I'm using this is, is there room for you, or do you have a palate for exploring the regulatory side of how to steer development and give some of the developers direction, as well as some certainty that if they head down a particular design path, and they check all the boxes, that there's a path to approval? And this is just one example, and this was, you know, we, we put this together in a couple of days, of, of how do we do this? And how do we engage you in a conversation and understand what your palate is for it? I joked with someone, there are certain foods that I, no matter how wonderful you told me they taste, I will not taste them. You could put, no matter how much sauce, or no matter which way you cook them, I will not have a palate to entertain trying them. So, you know, that's my food analogy. But I think in some of the discussions, we need to know on the regulatory side as your staff, as well as guiding, you know, Horsley-Witten and having discussions with Union Studios, or where do I push up against, I don't care how you do it, Jamie, I'm just not going to taste that product. I have no tolerance for that product. I have no tolerance for trying that meal.
I will volunteer that I'm, I'm ready to try this sauce or not. I think, I think particularly in the, in the older parts of town, and, and even in the newer parts, some of the subdivisions, you know, people have moved into a single-family zone subdivision, they're there because that's where they want to be, and sort of forcing change in that, something completely different, doesn't make sense. But then, when you have these older parts of town, where the current rules don't let you replicate what's there, that seems like something that should change.
Obviously, I think the board as a whole wants to improve our outcomes. We realize that we're helpless, helpless to a certain extent, in, in some recent projects. As much as we might want to, but it's not able to, it varies, it's mostly regulatory. At least for me, kind of early, there's a series of questions, it makes it easier for me to develop a thought process as to what we really want, having tools for better outcomes. For example, what is the adjacent land use? Because it, it makes a difference if it's right in town versus. Adjacent to the S and E and R. How can the increased density relate to our generic zoning? How do we assess the capacity of the land? Like, what are the important factors? Lot coverage? Whatever, whether it's looking at some things from other communities, what they've done, we definitely need some good examples, because that's how we get really violent. You have to build a building, you have to create a block, so.
I agree, Maria, that was really well stated. I also, I wish, if we could expand this out, if all of the neighborhood looked like this, and this one little piece of woodland was the only stormwater retention space, the only trees in the neighborhood, the only wildlife corridor, and that was the only green space that wasn't lawn and mulch in that whole neighborhood, in that whole town, that would be a valuable resource to not permit 15 duplexes stuffed on it. Like, I, I get that we want to infill, but people who live here count too, and they can't have every inch of town developed. Just because they're already in infill space doesn't mean that their green space doesn't matter to them too, in my opinion.
I'm going to disagree strongly and just say, if, if it's not theirs, if, if they want it, they need to band together and buy it. I mean, you can't.
How densely could we allow that? How densely could our regulations allow that?
Again, and again, I can appreciate both points, but would I just plop down those 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 houses? That's no dense than the neighborhood surrounding it.
With a retention basin?
The, the difficult, yeah. The difficulty in the conversation that you have with a modern development in a older area is that, to Peter's point, all of these homes here, and Maria brings a good point, say this was topographically challenged, it was slightly lower than the surrounding homes. I will guarantee you that when this development was contemplated, that all of these lots said, "Great, all our water flows to Lot 85." And none of these homes, when they were developed in the 1930s, 40s, and 50s, had any inkling of stormwater retention, because they had a big vacant lot, Lot 85, that it could go to. So the vacant Lot 85, when it has to be developed now because of modern standards, and we're much more smarter and educated than we were when we developed in the 20s, 30s, 40s, and 50s, prior to the 1970s in the Clean Water Act, require modern developments to handle their stormwater. So that takes away a bigger chunk. We also require them to fully park their development, so it takes up more space. But, I mean, it's a conversation, I, I think you need to, to Maria's point, we need to do some real-life kind of, here's a potential type of project, how would the development professionals, how would they do it if it was a six-plex in one building? How would they do it if it was six cottages? How would they do it if it was six duplexes? And in the R-10, you may have a, a palette for different styles and different types of density, and again, that's what we're working through with Horsley-Witten. I think Maria makes a good point, there's a, a couple of zoning models called transect zoning, where it kind of is not a pyramid, but you start with one block, and then there's two blocks, and then there's three blocks, and there are transitional zones between residential and commercial.
That's the same plan ever come through, usually, the same idea.
Yeah. So if you look at, people may be familiar with, with a recent application where you have Ocean State Job Lot on Holly Street, Mr. Hallbrook's property on Holly, and, and that zoning code would have been a transitional property, that would have been allowed to be potentially commercial or residential, but done in a manner not to soften, but to bridge the gap between the residential and the hard-built commercial. And the density may have, in that transitional code, even been greater than what Mr. Hallbrook ultimately proposed, but it would act as a transitional area between the single-family traditional development and the hard scape of that commercial zone, which is, you know, a 200-foot-long building, 30 feet tall, without a window in it, and just back-loading dock doors. Again, that's something that we could look at in developing zoning codes and those transitional areas. To Maria's point, when this property, you know, if the southern part, we'll call it the bottom of the screen, the southern part of this example, was Ocean State Job Lot. You know, maybe you would want to take this building, oops. Oops is a technical term, used by planners very often. You know, but again, it's, it's a discussion, you know, is there a place for a building that's like that? Or what, and again, that's a footprint. You could do a lot with architecture, and recessed porches, and porches added on to that, to make that building, although it's bigger, have a single-family kind of duplex footprint, a rowhouse appearance from the street, and then take on something very different to the rear of that property. But again, we have a lot of talented people that we actually have retained at the moment that can further this discussion. But again, we're, we're trying to gear your, your palate for this type of thing. Mr. Jordan said he's, he's ready to go to Le Buffet and, and try everything.
Well, I think, well, Susan, Susan is correct in that the reaction that we get with infill projects that we've had now are, they're one-up island out, very similar in, in nature and in that. So the neighbors have had this lovely parcel that has, you know, green space, more line of snow on all these years, but of course, as Paul and Peter said, they don't have to be the only, so when something comes up like this, there's a greater chance of a loss, there's just a lot of, there's a lot of, you know, nowhere. And, you know, the concerns are mutually consistent with flooding, depending on whether a lot of it, that thing, wasn't in place. But I really feel that it's the obligation of the town, in particular, to our really GIS capacity, we're looking town-wide at where we have our buildings, where we have our development, and where there are, and this is not necessarily anything related to a greenway, because that's more connected, but where there should be public parks, we talked about this, we're, we're, that's something the town should be doing. We should be looking at where, where there's potential to be use arcs that create a, a green space for people, not anything new, but as communities grow, the wise plan is to make sure that it's like this, like, obviously, greenways are wonderful as well, having them connected. We, we can't pull these parcels and infill, we can't pull how the project evolves, especially with data regulations, or as creating these valuable resources that mean that people are very enamored with it, but we need to be proactive in that, in our, in our.
To think that here is my basement's going to get that, why is it so thick? That's the, every, that's the common theme that I love, right? Why is it so thick? I think we're setting ourselves up by squeezing all these little houses into that space. So, I mean, really mad, they go to the, the town, and why is there so much over there? And, and draining a lot of that space? How many friends have said to me, "You didn't put this corner, you didn't put it right there"? Why are there so many? And that's what the regulator can say. Why are there so many, why is it so thick?
And I, I would say, why are we allowing developers to take two houses, put them together, and make that something special that requires so much less space than two houses require? Because I don't really see the difference between, they're two separate houses, okay, you stuck them together with one wall, and now they're privileged into how much space they need. Why are we doing that? Why don't we just say, if it's multifamily? No, not in terms of density, not in terms of the number of units they're allowed.
Right, but, I mean, if you have 6,000 square feet, that's three units, or 6,000 square feet, that is one unit, I think.
I think if we, if we redefine what we're going to call multi-house.
Development versus six new houses on an acre, or five acres each on, it's virgin land somewhere out in West Kingston, are very different animals. They have, you know, I, I would argue that building on, on undeveloped land, on, on large house lots, has a larger environmental impact than this kind of infill. You've got sewers and services. I mean, I think there's a reason for doing this, and, and also just the access for, especially if it's lower moderate income, access to shopping, bus routes.
Right, but that doesn't mean take regular-sized houses sticking together based on, you know.
I think we've seen some bad projects.
Well, we've looked at, those were pretty big houses with big garages, and big, everything was big above them, et cetera, for how much green space was around.
That's what I agree with you, but on the driveway, parking, you want to, like, build parking stops somewhere on that lot, too, with a driveway to access, drivers to sit in. Like, if they're infill, well, now you're cleaning all of that gray that's been building before, with the driveways, parking stops, garages, you know, like, there's, it's not just, there's a lot of infrastructure to make that out of.
Peter makes a point that you, here's the difficulty with infill, right? When you infill, everybody's looking at lots 3, 15, 23, 25, 33, and 75 as small lots. And then when you go to develop the infill, you're like, "Look at all that road they have to build." Did anyone discuss this big public street with on-street parking that the municipality has to maintain? Because this development isn't just these six houses, it's the six houses plus this 28-foot-wide street that accesses those houses. So it, it's looking at everything to understand what your palate for things is. If the scale and scope of houses, you know, that, that's a discussion we can have with the design professionals. There are developments in communities that I've, I've, you know, I don't just look at aerial photos, I actually have extensive travels throughout New England and the East Coast to actually look at developments. If I see it in a book and I'm within. If I see it in a book and I'm within four hours of it, I typically have been on that property. I've been on some developments that the buildings are 60 feet wide, 240 feet long, but if I walked you down the street and didn't tell you how big the building was, they play as six single-family units, no different than walking in this community on this street. But if I told you that that building was 60 by 240, I think you would have anxiety. But if you actually walked in front of a development that did it correctly, you may have less anxiety. So I think the difficulty is sometimes looking at other developments, you know. It's almost like if we had a tour bus, we'd take a ride throughout New England in a day and hit six or seven developments and then come home at night and discuss them at a meeting. And maybe that's a possibility at some point in time. But again, it's, it's finding that balance between existing development, the utilization of land, the infill. You know, you're having this discussion, part of it's also supporting the downtown and your main streets. You know, if you asked a business member on Main Street if they would like an extra, you know, 20, 30, 40 units within a five-minute walk of downtown, they would probably say yes. But if you asked the neighbor to one of the developments that may put those units, they will say no. That's the nature, and I would probably do the same thing if I was in a butter with that. So, you know, the discussion's valid, but I think we need to, from my perspective, that our consultants need to show us more. And again, I made the point earlier, there are board members who, no matter what we put in front of you, no matter how it's drawn, designed, or at what scale it is, you're going to have a certain palette. And you'll reach that point where you will not agree that a new style or a new dish is something you're willing to entertain.
So I, I, I corrected my mom, Robin, I think that Robin is talking about mass and scale rather than specific number of units, and a lesser or perceived lesser degree of scrutiny for that type of mass and scale. Like, if you took the house on Lot 120 and you shoehorned it into Lot 29, or 19, or any of those, what would be the impact of that? Would it matter if it was just a single-family house, or what if it were four units? I think that's sort of what we're thinking about in all of this.
I'm just...
It's the outline of the house.
There's a lot of coverage there.
And, sorry, what I just did while you were discussing that, I would, not that I'm a betting person, but I would potentially bet that that lot, that Maria just referred to as Lot 120, was a double lot, someone owned both of them, and they were either merged by zoning or someone built a larger home on two lots.
Right, but to take that house, take the square footage of that house, and put it on one of those smaller lots, because in many ways, we feel like that's what we're seeing. No, you probably can't.
As a, I can, just give me a moment. So you're saying as a duplex or as a single-family, Maria?
That is, it's massive, it's a whole lot of property.
But I think what we saw as well was, you know, that question of the stormwater detention space and being part of the open space, or the idea that open space and backyards are the same thing.
Yeah, I feel like that's...
And sort of, you know, revisiting some of those ideas might, might have improved a project that we didn't like.
I don't think the retention, because you can't build your house on your pond.
You don't have to do it.
We can do it, we can do it really quick, Maria.
It's really, it's really...
That's not true. I think there's a coverage to be, if you build one house that big, if you wanted, you could build it just to be, you're making it sound like you get a special advantage. Scale, it's not.
They get a different number of units.
Well, that's the whole complaint and all, you know.
Somebody who's putting in one house, probably also wants a yard, and they have fewer here, there.
Jamie, I think you want to crop that box so that all you have is the house itself, not all the land that comes with it.
Oh, just a larger, just the house?
But it's just the house, and let's put it in this little box.
Narrow rectangle of lot. Yeah, sorry, I mean...
No, you're not ch...
Yeah, and Peter is right. If it's a comprehensive permit, we basically do away with our zoning ordinance and we have to whatever they want, and we have to, I think, better develop the entire area for the communities, still with the goal of increasing the stock of affordable housing, but really being able to better define what's a good fit, what's a good little land, and what's not.
The development of real estate, it wasn't really a development law. Why do you get to do this to all of those houses on the lot, where as a town, we do not benefit more from...
Well, that was a very serious circumstance they were in, by the way, that not putting in any of that. I've never seen anything like that in one year, yeah, was subdivided in nineteen forty.
But like this, like, they probably only go four, so they wouldn't have, they would take out, just enough.
Well, that's...
They wouldn't get the, oh, no, they don't want to have to be a town anymore.
But to Peter's point, someone could come in, excuse me. A developer could come in and, you know, that could be House One.
Or those could be...
Because that's fitting into our ten zones.
That could be...
Those could all be duplexes, or they could be one-bedroom, four-quarters, right?
Yeah, so someone could be...
It's a lot of lot...
It can't be a lot, I mean, there's a cover, I don't know what it is, but it's like 20% or 25% of the relationship. You're making it sound like you could fill every square inch of a house. You can only fill 20% of it with house.
Of the buildable base, right?
Of all the land, you can only fill 20%, so that's why they're using those, you know, space, so 20%, so that's it. Can't go all the way.
Well, what happened on the opposite building, we're looking at that.
What we're using...
It was all the house. It could barely cover 10% of the space.
Right. It was...
They were meeting the density requirements, they were meeting the density requirements of the regulations, which was...
That's what I'm saying, is why are we allowing them their density requirement? Because it's a duplex, when there's no inclusionary, no, you know...
Density requirements was a number of units, so there was, whatever the zoning it was, you're allowed a full unit. Madam Chair, I would ask you not to discuss any active applications, not even...
I think there might be 30,000 square foot, 140,000 space in our town.
So one thing we're potentially going to look at, and Brian Janeup talked about it, that there's a relationship between the building footprint and the envelope and the amount of space that's dedicated to the unit. You've seen a sample of this in the cottage regulations where you have to have a building, there's your front porch, and that's kind of a quasi-public-private, it's private space, but it's interrelated with the street, and then in front of that, you have a private space with a minimum dimension, and then you have a kind of quasi-public street between there and a sidewalk. So I think that a lot of the discussion I've heard on the development applications is the functionality of the space used by the potential resident. You also have to remember, you know, people have made the point tonight that a developer has certain rights underneath your code to build at a certain density. Some of the difficulties is, is the way your regs are written. They're either choosing to do the duplexes because they can't do a triplex. They're choosing to do the single-family and ask for a comp permit because you can't put two units closer than 50 feet from each other. So some of the traditional development patterns that you see even in this photograph, you can't do because the units are closer than 50 feet from each other. So you can't replicate this in a multi-household family development because the units are too close. So we're looking at where you can steer better design and how, but still give the developer flexibility. They also, the developer has to react to market conditions and whether a single-family house without a garage will sell, whether a single-family house with a garage will sell, and if they demand a garage, can we write design provisions that make the garage not be in front of the house as its snout and has to be on the side? So again, street activation and street presence. There's a lot of things we can discuss, but I understand a lot of the anxiety associated with bigger buildings on smaller lots.
Jamie, there's work on, um, what the original cottage project, the Spanish cottage on Green Street, it was, it was an abandoned, outdated, archery, high, some parkable building, it was very long, and that definitely led to some, some wealth, not, you know, that may not always be the case for other, like, projects. And as we have, our, our, it may not be viable or available, maybe certainly specifics. You know, I think it's a little, wow, thinking about what it is, when it, because I mean, we've talked of not active, um, good inclusionary zoning, um, not something that is allowed in certain, some sort of environmental areas, there is a long line for, uh, like, um, engagement efforts. So it's a complicated, complicated, but how it is involved, they're, they're looking for, look at it, and again, having good examples and have bad examples, it's all a complex one. Studios will obviously give us great examples of the work, but also examples of how not to do that, helps us to find...
Maria, I just brought up Google Earth real quick, Main Street, Holly Street, Tower Hill, River Road, and your discussion of Park at Pox and our discussion internally as your staff about building a relationship between the built environment and the active-passive recreational space within a development and the required open space. And I think that also, in this kind of walkable scenario, I think we were also discussing the interrelationship to existing public parks. So, you know, Holly Street was just developed. How much open space and/or, you know, would the planning board be willing to have the numbers adjusted when you're X number of feet from an existing public facility of a certain scale? If, you know, for instance, Ocean State Job Lot happened to be a park or Little League Fields, and you were developing across the street, could you reduce the number required onsite because you have that facility?
I think that that's the development model in downtown Providence and Pawtucket and Central Falls and Cranston and all the places that every person in this town would say that we don't want. Where we just, you know, drive through Providence and houses and house and house on top of each other, and then a park down the road. That's what we're going to end up looking like if we don't find some way to not build every inch of our core areas. If we can't protect some parts of it, it won't look any different here than it does in the cities that we all claim we don't want us, ourselves to become. Because that is what we're doing here, is if there's a park down the road and we put in like those five triplexes that you put into that earlier, it's going to look like Pawtucket. I don't think that any of us want to live in Pawtucket.
I like Pawtucket. I like Central Falls in One Sockit, too. I was in the West End of Providence recently, and they have done some really beautiful work, not just restoring homes there, but with traffic calming, with bump outs, lots of landscaping, and, you know, for a very densely developed area, it's also very walkable. And I don't think, I don't think we're going to become that. I should, I should go back. My son, my son lives up there. I was going to say, if you go back to Google Earth, because I was thinking about road widths, and that, that new development, which shall go unnamed, really leaps out just because of the width of the roadway, right there in the center of the image. Is that the rule, that the road needs to be that big?
It's, it's 20 feet. That is the width of a development.
Does it just look big because it's not landscaped?
It's not landscaped. The landscape's not matured, so...
It would also be because the city is limited, it's a large city, you're talking about. But, you know, be realistic, it's there.
You ask and we can do, Maria. You ask for February.
I think there's a difference between, for me, there's kind of a, there's a difference there. You're a lot, you're a lot, you're a lot, you're a lot, say, hey, wish... It's not just that, sometimes, I'm, 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 I'm,
the example that Jamie was showing us in the PowerPoint, so I was, look, I can put in some very small houses for a low land cost, build small houses that are affordable. They don't have to be three thousand square feet with a double car garage.
Well, I would totally agree with you, except I'm feeling a little boom swangled by a recent project that we approved because it was small, affordable units. They're small workforce housing units. Boom, they're on the market for six hundred thousand. I, I feel duped and angered because in this case, small, affordable, small footprint, small yard houses, it's not getting us little A affordable housing in this town. It's, it's not getting us anywhere near teachers and firefighters.
And I want to try and clarify one point. Small homes from the regulatory side and more dense development does not equate to less expensive homes. Because you still can build a thousand square foot home at six hundred dollars a square foot, not including land costs. And that thousand square foot home will be six hundred thousand dollars. There is a house in Aragansett that was just sold, eight hundred and twenty-five square feet across from Super Stop and Shop, one lot in off of Route One, five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Eight hundred and twenty-five square feet on a ten thousand square foot lot. So if the, you know, the developer is going to come into the market at that market price point or push that market price point because it's new construction. The attempt you have at the affordability is inclusionary or if they do the comprehensive permit and you get those units and you get those units either for ninety-nine years or thirty years. You know, but again, just please understand that a good proportion of the development costs in South Kingstown are land costs. It is typically two hundred and twenty-five to two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for a house lot in town now.
We talked about allowing smaller, more density will in turn due to the comp housing units. And that has not come to bear. The picture that you have here was input, five units on there. There's enough to say that any one of those units is going to be affordable.
Under six units, you're not under inclusionary zoning. Over six units, you are.
So if you build all of those houses and each one is on the market for seven hundred thousand dollars, it doesn't do a thing to help our affordability in this town. Yet we're permitting very dense development in town, which in theory is supposed to contribute to affordability because we're putting lots of units on one piece of land. But then when each one's on the market for very high unit now, it doesn't do anything for our town.
What if we went back to some of those lots and said, okay, instead of these six detached dwellings, we did two and a half story, twelve unit apartment building? I was reminded of something the other day. It pops up every now and then in a lot of my feeds and it's that California bungalow court. Sort of U-shaped apartment building with lots of green in front and, you know, they might be two or three stories. They're not unattractive and you squeeze a lot of housing into a small space. And I, and I think rentals are probably the way, the affordable housing issue, not single family.
And again, the, the discussion tonight I think is good. It, it lets me understand where the pushback is, where the discussion needs to go. And from my perspective, it's more examples, both in the kind of metaverse type example and then some from real life, boots on the ground where they are. You know, Maria makes valid points with regards to the, the reference to the East Greenwich project. I'm familiar with that one as well as another one that Union Studios did in West Concord. Where, you know, a lot of people applaud that one for how much open space there is. Well, the open space is land they couldn't build on. That's why it's got so much open space. If they could have put more units there, I'm sure the developer would have put more units there. But they, they ran out of functional usable space. So there's always two stories to every development as it's viewed by the neighbors, the town, and then the developer, maybe fourth, and the designer who did it. So again, there are some good examples out there and there are some bad examples out there. I, I applaud you as a planning board to have the discussion and not dive directly into written words. But have the discussion about what you want the development outcome to be. From that discussion, we can write the words to steer the development to a particular end game. Versus, I think historically, and I've been in that trap before as a planner, where someone says, you know, we want this, go write the regulations. You don't spend enough time on what the outcome of the written words are. And to Peter's point, the developers build to those written words. I think now you're entertaining written words and pictures. In, in some aspects, they are.
Well, I think too, I mean, the reality is that we do not and will not affect real estate markets. We cannot. It's not going to happen. But thinking creatively, would it make a difference if comprehensive permits were seventy-five percent or we got a fact, how would, depending on what criteria that we might put along those lines?
It will help us meet our goal.
They taste a lot better.
Well, no, it's not.
That's what I mean is, we discussed right now.
Affordable development applications and they've, this big unit count, I can't remember exactly. I spend a lot of time down here and I'm not as involved in the East Greenwich areas. But it could be worth reaching out. I can ask for his insight on this. If there's anything that South Kingstown can incentivize those type of developments. If, if that's what you'd like, see where it's appropriate and cited. I don't know the answer, but that's just a thought that comes to my mind.
So Kingstown is another.
I immediately think, if you're not talking about a hundred percent affordable, now you're not talking about community integration anymore. You're talking about building centralized projects for low and moderate income people because you don't want them in the rest of town. It doesn't, it doesn't play well. It's not terraced. This one gets me a building.
Yeah, we don't want to go back to that old school subsidized housing. And I think that's why you get upset when someone tries to cheat a little bit and what's called the, or, save you.
So somewhere in the discussion, there are regulations. There are design guidelines that are in everybody's head and it's our role as your staff with our consulting team to take your thoughts and advance those thoughts and, and continue the discussion.
Show us the text, show us the regulations and show us what it could look like, both best and worst case scenarios.
Maria, I know it's nine oh five, but I, I'd like to share one more thing. The chair and I have discussed about the format of our next work session. I would like to maybe reshuffle the deck, see if we can find a venue where we can sit kind of around in a circle where we potentially have access to whiteboard type scenarios so we can sketch. We can put some drawings up. We can pull Google Earth up. We can go some places. And again, advance the discussion and have it in a, in a, I don't want to say this is unproductive, but in a bit more kind of casual, relaxed, round table type setting where, you know, we're all integrated. Maybe Amy's sitting amongst you and Brian, Jay and I are sitting amongst you and we have a conversation. And again, with tools and access to Google Earth and other things, you know, I can fly you around New England and bring you to different developments and, and again, see what your palette is for those. And potentially in another month, we can have something from Horsley Whitten and Union Studios on some good and bad examples and potentially take some examples I showed you in PowerPoint and have them drop down. You know, my goal is, I'd like them to show us, you know, two mansion houses in the parking for that. Four duplexes, one larger building. What do all those footprints look like and how do those different footprints affect the surrounding property? And, you know, we have to use examples. I'm trying to use real ones from South Kingstown, primarily in the Peace Dale and Wakefield areas where you're more subject to infill. But given the value of raw land, and you're seeing a little bit of it now, and I think you're going to see it more in the future, where developers are seeking out those larger, single-family lots to purchase for six or seven hundred thousand. That may be thirty or forty thousand square feet and then try and infill them. And they may start buying one or two of them side by side. And you need to be prepared for that. And again, advancing this discussion is, is part of that work.
I think what you did tonight was helpful with sort of showing us an example from town and saying, here's a couple of vacant lots and here's what you may or may not do depending on how we want to change the rules. I think some, some more of those examples were helpful. And then just thinking again about what parts of town do we, do we want to do this? Because it's obviously not everywhere. But there are opportunities.
I think that we spoke about a whole world system that had a model and the first type of, you know, Jamie's progression. Have whether it's made out of, you know, timber, chay or wood or whatever. To have a, you know, a, an area and then have different types of buildings. To actually look and see how the massive scale actually hits onto the size of a home. And the different scale of buildings that might, you know, cut on it.
Maria, I'll look into that. There, about six months ago. There is a small architectural urban design firm who actually was potentially going to produce that as a product. Basically kind of a monopoly-like kit with the cottage, you know, pop-up house and, and the mansion house and the triplex and everything. I'll have to see if that has become available. But to Maria's point, to, to have this plotted out on GIS and then put it down and, and give you a, you know, a strip, a popsicle stick that represents the road and parking spaces. I've done it with Post-its before where you cut out parking spaces to scale and everyone's got to start putting the Post-its down. Wait, it's a duplex. That requires four parking spaces now. I gotta put the four parking spaces down. Do they have garages? Oh, I can take two Post-its away because each one has a garage and there's a car and car in there. How wide is the road? You know?
Can I just ask, like, I just got a little lost. So if we do look at how many manor houses you can fit on an acre of land, are you suggesting that we write zoning ordinances? That would give us the power to permit or deny certain types of housing that right now are allowed by right? Are we, like, how would, see how well all those manor houses in that acre change picture of what we will and won't have in front of us for.
The result of your Horsley Whitten study is proposed regulatory changes which will affect how you presently permit multi-household units. So.
Does anybody came before us and proposed a duplex? We'd have different regulations than we have now, which is there's no regulation for a single-family residence by right. We would have regulations to beyond what we have right now?
Potentially, yes. You have to decide as, as a board whether you want to regulate duplexes, triplexes and multi-household developments in a different manner. I think what I'm hearing from you is what you have right now. You are not satisfied with the end product and would like to entertain some regulatory changes to steer the end product in a slightly different manner. Now, it's not, no one's proposing kind of the Chinese menu where a developer comes in and shows you a mansion house and you say, well, for cottages, not a mansion house. They still, you're going to build the regulatory framework and they're gonna bring the market conditions of what they feel they can sell. And it may be a mansion house, it may be a cottage, it may be a couple of duplexes on a lot. But that's kind of the discussion we're having now so that we can understand where your comfort zone is with the different types of development, given different acreages and different scenarios and classifications in town. What you allow in the R-ten may not be everything you allow in the R-twenty and it may only be a version of what you allow in the R-thirty.
Somebody proves a lot. They want to build, they want to build, they want to. But if you want the density privilege where passing on to multiple families, then you've got to have multiple families housing. Or we, that, that's going to be two different things. Certainly don't want anywhere else, you know, where we're looking at some, um, properties. Well, building, that's a lot, and we're gonna get it. So most of South Kingston is, the beautiful houses, both, that's both up to a two.
Yeah. Our department is not proposing in any manner that you control the size of a single-family home. It's when someone proposes to develop multiple units on a single lot, that's your multi-household development regulations. It's not the subdivisions. That's kind of another class of development. It's really for that one parcel, multi-units on that parcel, and how that parcel interrelates with a particular housing type in the neighborhood it's being proposed for.
It's our getting, one of our houses, without so many houses that we're now building new schools.
I just, I'm sure we're not having like a bad allergic reaction to one project that slipped between the cracks because of.
We wanna make sure that doesn't happen, yeah.
It did sort of squeeze between the rules, and again, I don't wanna bring up a specific project, but, you know, we all had a very strong reaction to it. But it was one. It wasn't the only less-than-perfect project that we've seen in the last years. You know?
Those are the ways you build affordable houses. It's like, it's like making a cost. Whether you call it a hundred, five, it's a little, it's a house. It's way more expensive. You're gonna save a lot, a lot, it's because you're taking it a lot. Like, if you're building a small house, you gotta set this, it's very, it's all, it's really, you gotta call for size. Just pick up a house that you don't like and ask where we're gonna build affordable houses.
What do you mean by that?
Although, like, the duplexes you do not like, that's how you can afford.
That's not a big ugly house. That's two houses put up together.
A lot of them are big.
And I don't think that deserves the privilege.
Say, you wanna get, like, working-class people to get four homes. That's a cheap request.
I think that we need to think about leaving some brown space where we don't have to contrive ways for rainwater to re-enter the system. There should be some space, no matter where you build a lot.
And again, I look at the zone, the coverage lots, pretty much everything is 40%, 75%. Does it have a square? Do you have driveways and roads or other?
What happened to that? Where's that going?
Except for, like, commercial downtown and commercial neighborhood.
Or what we were just looking at?
Building coverage, non-impervious surface coverage.
So I have another question, kind of a little bit related. So if I'm allowed to build a duplex, or four, two duplexes, on this lot by right, what does the planning board think they are demanding I add to my buffer or my architectural details or anything else? Why, I hope nobody's listening to this tonight on Zoom. Why would they do anything we ask them to do if we are forced to approve this structure that they've proposed to us? Why would they make the trees bigger, the road prettier, the houses nicer, the front porches, whatever? If they're allowed to build a fourplex on this property, why would they give us anything?
I was like, most of the development, and I was coming. I was too, and you know, long as, you've seen a lot of this in the gathering over the years. And I live at the school, and they really built it, but they wouldn't, you know, this would not, they would, they're coming back for this. They understand this.
If they're allowed to build a duplex.
If they're able to something that maybe.
I'm not seeing the, everything I've seen was a question of waiver, it always went out. That's all I've seen so far.
I've seen lots of good.
I've seen lots of.
Maybe it be allowed by right, but we just.
But how do they get rights? They have to wait till, if that idea is on their mind, because they have the square footage and they have the setback.
Just because they have a right, we can still have the conditions.
Why? Why would they need that?
We have to take that, we have to use that character, because we have to, that's why. We have to learn, like, if you want this, you have to build that.
I get it if they want waivers.
So.
Right. I agree with what Susan's saying.
No.
Comes in front of us, they're looking for us.
We can't, we can't say no to anything we've been told.
Yeah. Just for, yeah. Just for clarity, that everything before you, you have some regulatory control over. Some, not complete, especially with a comprehensive permit. There are certain things where both myself as a planning director and Amy as legal counsel will advise you that, given the regulatory scenario, given the permitting scenario, that the developer has met those regulatory requirements and meets those standards, so it becomes more difficult to say no. And there are scenarios where, when they meet the standards, to Susan's point, you can ask for more. The developer is not required to give you anything more than what the regulations is required. But to Peter's point, you have a lot of repeat customers, a lot of developers who are developing long-term in the community. Every month, there's a delay. That could be an extra payment on the note. That means there's no revenue. There's only expense associated with the project. In Rhode Island, the permitting model is almost 12 to 18 months just due to your four-step process and time, and sometimes there's money. Why would a developer give you an extra affordable unit when there's no regulatory requirement that they do so? They're either extremely generous, believe in affordability, or we're looking to get the permits in an expeditious manner. You know, what we're trying to do on the regulatory side is both give the planning board more tools in their toolbox on the review, but also give the developer more certainty that if they design to a certain standard, they get their permits in an expeditious manner, and there's less discussion about waivers and if, in order to get the waiver, what are you offering in addition to what you've already drawn on your plan? So again, trying to hit standards that you decide are appropriate. Not that, you know, Brian, Jay, or Amy and I decide, or Rich Bourbon has, but that you're looking for a particular style of development in your community. Let's set the parameters and give both the planning board some certainty of outcome as well as the development community. So that, Susan, to your point, you're asking, you're not asking anymore for, "Can you give me a little more buffer?" They're already providing the buffer because your regulations require it. They're not asking you, you're not asking for an additional unit. They've already met your design standards. You're not asking for, "Can you please do front porches and have street articulation and interaction?" Your regulations already require it. "Can you please not put your detention base in your open space?" The regulations make it clear that if you put the detention base in the open space, you need to provide more open space because that gets subtracted from your calculation. So again, it's setting the framework for the developments you're looking for. And again, I think that's where this discussion is leading. It gives us direction to move on to the next steps.
And that's supposed to be on multiple.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
I mean, it would be nice if you could somehow better train some of the engineer.
Again, we've had discussions internally on the regulatory side whether the legislature would allow us to do it, to require appropriate professionals to be more involved in the design of non-single-family homes, being architects and landscape architects, as well as engineers. That it's not one discipline, that maybe it's multiple disciplines that are required to be involved in the process.
Well, if there is nothing else, it's very, very, very lively, very, very, very thorough, and actually more than that. That's how, that is not, that is not.
I think Peter's got some work for us to do, some balsam wood and some glue.
All you need is a 3D printer these days.
Does anyone have any updates or things on it?
As I was saying before, when I was at committee last month. It's one. It's where executives or regulations that, just to kind of, you know, the rest of the world. Money that's available for, or that's credit, that is, that is, that is, that is, that is, that is. Educational outreach. What else have I missed this year?
Pretty much covered it, John. They don't have anything really to fill in now. Other than that, it's a outreach educational program that we're going to do in development. Right now, it's a lot of out there that are out.
I think there was at least some discussion about, how would the larger developments that we see over, also small, people that are, I don't know, it's, my, well, their family. I think how they, what their family, they're available, so, what, they're looking at wants to. They're looking to, to also try to hit these small, where they certainly consider themselves developers, but are looking for, how, just how can we, so, how can we.
The only thing I have to add is, the way that's been going on is, they love, with the great, with the housing, there are so many bills up there, and they're all over the place. The ADUs, for example, four different bills, not many of them facing it. Sort of the reality that we face, of course, they're like, they're not planners. They don't always think about, so one of the things that we're plugging, you know, that's going to be on, and they're going to be, your unfunded mandates for heavy-handed business that utilize the one-size-fall. You know how special our community is, and how it's doing that, okay? Well, I'm, I'm a builder, and I'm ready to, I'm ready to.
I have a, I have a lot of retro property, it's just, the license just seems really, so, like, such a big name for, for the same place of writing, it's going, what significant. So the license is running pretty fast.
I don't know if anybody noticed, but the new apartment's up on 108 across from the Tractor Dealer. You know what I'm talking about. So there's a big sign that says, "Ideal for student living."
What's it say?
Ideal for student living. I mean, I realize every unit adds to the overall stock, and it should, but ideal for student living.
I have to say, in college, at least, so, I'm, I'm.
There are two places adjacent to the university, which is, you know, the other, the other, the other. Each, each. So.
It's just making it so that it's unaffordable. It's just.
Thank you, everyone. See everyone on the. Okay.
Crazy legislation. There's a lot of legislation about environmental justice.
Yes.
There is. And one of the bills says that these.
Yes.
Adjourned, yeah. These four things have to be true in, you know, sort of querying the census data. I went back to my boss, and I said, "These three can be true, or this one can be true, but not all four can be true." Because they were asking me to map it, and I said, "I can't."